Good evening, I'd like to call or the special meeting 5:00, January 17, 2017. First of all, our business, we need to amend the agenda because I'd like to, before we talk with Kim on the salary ordinance recommendations and talk with Liz Gross, I want to go ahead and make my appointment to the Drainage Board, so can I have a motion to amend the agenda?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
I'll send it.
I got a motion and a second, all those in favor saying if I was saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Who were they?
I don't know.
Okay.
I'm not calling you because I'm not eating any cake.
I'm sorry. Well, I want to go ahead, as you all know, Tom Campbell has been, he's here tonight, has been my Drainage Board appointment, and due to personal reasons, he's resigned from the Drainage Board. He stayed on until we were able to find something circumstance that my, I found Bob Rogie has agreed to be in my appointment, so I'm going to officially appoint Bob Rogie to the Drainage Board. So do I have a motion to go ahead and accept, Bob?
We didn't approve the amendment.
Yeah, I did.
What? I think you needed it.
It unanimous.
Just because of, I heard a bunch of yays and nays.
Amendment to the agenda had to be unanimous.
No, no. The agenda, amendment to the agenda has to be about the board. I'm looking at Robert rules.
That's not how we've operated.
Right.
As a council. The council, the council has operated that the agenda would have to be amended unanimously by unanimous consent, and there was a, there was a push a number of years ago to do away with that sort of rule of operation for the council, and that was defeated, because I was often the only one objecting to adding things to the agenda at the last minute. But I don't know.
So let me, if I could, Mr. Owen, let me say this, I'm under oppression, which I'm just under oppression, I don't have any reason to know, but I heard it. Nathan probably couldn't remember why. My reflection was many, many years ago that they just adopted the Robert rules for the procedures, so if you all change it within my lifetime, I did. So yeah, does my understanding operate procedures?
I'm not entirely sure what the, how it came to be, but I know that when I started, when I came on in 2012, any addition or deletion to the agenda had to be by unanimous consent, and there were a few instances where a minority was, would object to the changing of the agenda, because they didn't want something sat in front of them at the last minute, not necessarily for this type of thing, but they didn't want an ordinance or a resolution sat in front of them as we started the meeting. And there was a push to change that rule in 2012, '13 time period, and I was very adamantly against that, because at the time, I was in the minority, objecting to having things laid in front of me at the last minute as we started the meeting. So I'm not sure what prompted that stipulation or put that stipulation in place, but that is how the council has operated, that if one person objected to changing the agenda, then the agenda didn't change.
From the lawyer's perspective, I can't, with what you said, I'm not in a position to say I'm going to be the other meeting. I would have to say.
I know I just sent out an email to be, and I didn't, I didn't realize this was going to be such an ordeal. I sent out an email, and of course, Patsey didn't put it on the workshop, which I stopped in and said, I didn't realize this was going to be a big, my appointment to the Drainage Board, I don't know what the issue is.
We operate by a set of rules.
Robert's Rules orders, which they've adopted.
But we can adopt.
But I'll go back and look and see, if you want me to go back now and see if I can find that other, but it is Robert's Rules order, I looked that up before.
Well, we can adopt rules in which to conduct business.
Yeah.
Apparently that has been done, and that's how we've operated for the past few years.
I know, we were just, because the way that the holidays have fell and the way that the Drainage Board meetings have fallen, that's why we're kind of in this little time crunch here.
The Drainage Board still has a meeting.
You want me to go back and?
Doesn't affect the Drain Board meeting.
What matter?
It's not a legal question, it's a rule of operation. If we adopted a rule of operation.
I don't have any opinion, because I don't know.
Issue with me appointing, my Drainage Board appointment.
We should continue to operate by the rules we operate by.
There's something going on I don't know about or something. I don't think I can. Well, is there going to be an issue if I do my Drainage Board appointment during the, I mean, I really don't see what the issue is, some, I don't know what's going on, but if at the 7:00, which we have on here, we have City Council Board appointments, I can?
Yeah, we'll talk about it then.
For whatever it's worth, in the resolution in 2013, and I, you all changed it, you have, just says, "Per Resolution 2003, the common council shall only amend the proposed meeting agenda by unanimous consent." Whereas the council now desires to amend Resolution 2003 to authorize the council to amend the proposed meeting agenda by simple majority vote rather than by unanimous consent."
And that resolution was defeated in 2013.
One, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four.
And it was vetoed.
Okay, well, you know, and it was not signed and approved by the mayor, it was vetoed, you're absolutely right. Ding 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 ding, it's back to unanimous.
Sounds dramatic.
Right. Let's move forward.
I couldn't remember all the details. You were jogging my memory.
I like it, wow.
Talking my memory.
Explain it.
So there you go, so there was a motion, so the 2000 resolution clearly was attempted to be amended, and it was vetoed by the mayor for the time before vote to amend it to allow less than a unanimous vote to amend the agenda, and the mayor vetoed it on May 17, 2013, therefore, it's the 2000 resolution.
Stance.
It's requiring unanimous consent. That's the, so I have a little. You want to put up this, Rowan?
So I can just take it during the council meeting, we have?
Well, it's on the agenda for the council meeting, but if it's not on the agenda for the council meeting, you're back to the same thing.
No, we have council board appointments.
Okay.
On the agenda.
Okay, I'm just, I was just saying, if it's not, you'd have to go through it, but you tell me it is, so.
Wow, okay. Thanks, guys. Tom, would you stay for that meeting then, please?
And if you actually, you have taken the reasons attached, mayor did. I will email it, with your own permission, I'll email it to all of you all now, because it might something.
Thank you. Sorry about that, I didn't know it was going to be a big, make my appointment. Go ahead.
Elizabeth Gross here, from Parkland HR, with recommendations, I know we've been talking about this for over a year, in 2016, I believe it was, I don't remember what month, but in 2016, I made a proposal to shift the pay grades with some proposed new pay grades, and that was tabled. And then this year, I've been working with Liz on a lot of new initiatives with jobs and pay grades. Lisa and I, and I believe the mayor, decided prior to the budget process, that we'd wait and have Liz finish all of her recommendations and come back to you guys first part of the year, so here we are. Liz has probably a couple pages of recommendations, and I'll pass those out. We've scheduled hopefully an hour to allow time for any questions that anybody might have, and for those of you who aren't used to the kind of language in the pay grade system and things like that, just, you know, I would ask that you be patient, try to save some of the questions maybe after she has time to present her findings and her recommendations. Liz, I'll pass it back.
Well, thank you, appreciate you giving us time this evening and rolling on on a lovely January winter day. As Kim said, we're looking again at the compensation city, for the city of Jeffersonville, the compensation system. I see a couple of new faces, and just, I want to take, I'll back up a little, my goal tonight is not to have you review this and approve or not approve the proposal, my goal tonight is to go through the proposal, some recommendations, then hand out the material to you, so you can have time on your own to review it more thoroughly, and then come back at this probably next month with additional questions and any refinements that might need to be made. And in the meantime, what questions aren't answered tonight, or additional questions that come up, could come through Kim, and then we can respond to those at another meeting. So I want to take the pressure off of, a decision needs to be made tonight, it's more of an informational meeting. So my goal tonight is usually to have you review and consider the proposal, and then come back next month to look at it more specifically. For this particular meeting, what, kind of four main points I want to make, I want to look at identifying the needs for the compensation system for 2018, and there are four items we're looking at. One, which is always out there, is continuing to maintain and address internal, external market competitiveness for the city positions. That's your basic goal for your pay grade system. Want to provide market-based pay ranges, which provide a competitive starting wage range, and allow for upward movement throughout the pay range for an extended period of time. The city has an interesting, somewhat conflicting goals in your, in your pay system. You want to be competitive, as you need to be on the entry side, we need to allow room to bring in people at a competitive wage. You also have a good number of long-term employees who stay in the position, and so we have this pressure on the upper part of the pay grades to keep people within a competitive pay grade, but you also have pressure on the lower end to keep that high enough to bring in good applicants on the lower end. So somewhat competing goals, but I'm hoping the proposal is a good attempt at addressing both of those somewhat conflicting goals. We want to address the impact, I want to come back to the longevity pay plan, I'm not sure if all of you around the table are familiar with that, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, but I want to address the impact of the longevity pay plan as it affects transparency of what people actually make in the year, the plan administration for that, and the cost involved. And then our last point is provide some general recommendations for alternative performance reward system for employees who have capped. I've had a number of requests to take a look at that whole issue of capping employees. Okay, let's take a brief moment for some background. In 2016, the city set the base salary level for exempt employees about $47,476. It wasn't a number they pulled out of the hat, that was due to the Department of Labor at that time saying exempt positions to qualify and exempt classification needed to be at that base pay. As some of you are aware, elections came, that did not go through, it's still kind of a pending thing out there, in terms of what the Department of Labor may do, but the city at the time went ahead and said, we're going to make that our base. So all exempt level positions, if they're an exempt employee, the base level pay is $47,476.
Could you explain to me what exempt employee means?
Sure, absolutely. It's, it's one of those, kind of a technical comp and Federal, Fair Labor Standards Act is where it comes from, so this goes back to like 1939. But the concept is this, is there are positions, the simplest way is there are positions that are exempt from being paid overtime, and those that are not exempt that you have to pay overtime too. So there are specific qualifications a job must have, and guidelines a job must have to be considered exempt, you can't just arbitrarily say, I want that job exempt and this job exempt because I don't want to pay overtime. There are specific requirements that a job has to fit a particular set of criteria, and in the case of the city, you've also put that additional requirement of a salary level. So two things have to be met, you got to be paid a salary, has to be this minimum level, and they have to fit in one of, just like six different categories that are set up on the Fair Labor Standards Act, that a position would need to, the duties of that job, the requirements of the job would need to fit into before you could call it exempt. The goal being, I think at the Fair Labor Standards, if Department of Labor had their way, they'd have everybody hourly, but this isn't an opportunity, a way for people to be your salary, usually your professional positions, or more skilled or specialized.
I know like one of the requirements is if it has like a sales component or a fundraising component, that's like one of the exemption statuses, or there's different qualifications that if a job fits into that category, then that boots them to an exemption.
Right, and a, and a common one may be right for an attorney, there's a professional classification, and that, an attorney's position would fall into that. Some of the definitions they have, without going too much of a sidestep, some of the definitions for a layperson don't make sense, they have an administrative exemption that has nothing to do with clerical work. To Kim's possession, for example, would be considered an administrative exemption, but I won't go into all the details.
To clarify, the city, we raised all of our exempt level employees that weren't at that minimum threshold to the 47476.
Right.
In 2016, or 2015, but we didn't, we didn't adopt a city policy that said any position that is exempt would meet this threshold. This was a reaction to federal guidelines, so if we created a new position in 2019 that was going to be a salary exempt position, it would not have to meet the 47476, because that federal regulation was rescinded. Is that correct?
My understanding was that, that was set by the city saying anyone coming in for an exempt position would be paid that amount.
I don't think we have.
And that's why you move those people up to that position, and a lot of this comp plan is, there are other elements, but a lot of the new comp grades and stuff are driven by that new base being 47, whatever that is for the new.
Right.
For the exempt level positions.
We elevated existing positions to the 47, but we didn't adopt any type of policy that said future positions would have to meet that minimum threshold.
So let me understand this, so if, if an exempt position left today, you may then decide that you were going to go, you would go back to current exempt, and I didn't plan to spend a lot of time on this, because it's kind of a complicated issue, but the current exempt level is around $24,000 a year.
Right.
Which is, by anyone who worked in comp is unbelievably a low standard for an exempt classification. That's why there was the push to move it higher from the Department of Labor.
Right, but that's been rescinded.
But the city, I think, is in putting themselves in a possible quandary to say, last year it's 47, but next year we may go back to 24,000, it's going to throw your co-comp system awry.
I could be wrong, but I thought we adjusted the pay grades.
Yes, we did.
And so the minimum pay grade.
The pay grade was approved with the exempt positions with the new threshold.
But if we created a new position, if we created a.
No, we did not create a new position.
If we did.
Yeah.
We would not have to meet the 47 threshold.
But you'd have to meet the pay grade though, right, which doesn't?
You'd have to meet the pay grade, which by default is going to fall into that, because for an exempt level position, you're not like, you're not going to hire someone, in the city, you'll make it an hourly position, the way you are, you're pretty clearly defined between your hourly and your exempt positions. There isn't a whole lot of people who would be, there's a handful that might be borderline, and we made that determined last year, who would be falling to exempt and non-exempt on those borderline ones.
Just so I'm clear.
Prior, prior, there were a number of positions that were below this threshold, and we had no choice, due to a federal regulation, to bring them up to that threshold. I don't think that would have been the case if that had not been the federal guideline.
That, well, I may back up, that's my, what had happened, and this was unfortunate, and it caused a lot of employers, well, angst would be the least comment they had to say, is that most employers, responsible employers did exactly what the city did, was make plans to be complacent with the Department of Labor requirements, going in fact, 1231, 2016.
Right.
We had an election, and that's all I'll say.
Yes.
A judge came out and said, nope, putting a stay on that, and it's had a stay on it since.
Yes.
So it did not implement, the city at that time could have opted to revert back and leave it as it was. They did not.
Were those?
They went ahead with the pay increases, and it was my recommendation at that time to not do that.
So.
But you have.
Can I get a clarification as well? Was it a regulation that the Department of Labor promulgated, or was it a directive?
It was the Department of Labor had a directive, it was, it was a mandatory requirement for employers.
Was it a regulation?
Yes, it coming in, yes, it's the, it's a, it's part of a federal law, part of the Fair Labor Standards Act, and they came in and said, in order to be exempt, we're changing the rules.
Get the language correct.
Yeah, it's, we're changing the rules.
It's a regulation, which means it was a law.
Right.
Then the judge put a stay on it.
Right, in order, in order to be compliant with the law.
Which put it back to what it was before then.
Correct.
They just basically said it's on hold and no ruling was made.
I think what Mr. Owen is saying is that we, for those exempt, for those employees we determined to be exempt, we complied with the regulation at that time, but we didn't pass an overall policy that says.
That's correct.
All exempt employees would make the 47,000. I think that's exactly what we did, if I remember the discussion.
If I could interject here just a bit, we've got a lot to cover, and I need to set point, because I have trouble hearing you, if you don't mind, tip forward. I do, I work with comp a lot, let me say probably without reservation, you will not hire anyone in a truly exempt position for the city of Jeffersonville for less than that amount of money. You just won't. Because if it's less than that amount of money, they'll probably be hourly position, if that's what you're getting concerned about. This comp system is not designed to drive everybody to an exempt position and paying that higher salary.
I think we're just trying to be clear on what we're doing.
I was strictly going for an exempt position, that is still, well.
I just, I just think we're trying to be clear on what we've done, that's all.
No, you're fine, I just, I was hearing a little bit on, from trying to do something that we're not, just trying to be a competent person, bring in whether exempt or non-exempt people that can fit into your pay grade in a competitive.
Matt, are you suggesting an action, or are you just?
No, I'm just clarifying that the city did not make this determination that we're going to pay exempt people 47476.
Right.
Just because they're exempt. We raised those employees to that level because we were told to do so by the federal government. Had the federal government not made that directive or, or regulation, we would not have done that, we would have exempt employees that make less than that now, and we may hire exempt employees in the future that make less than that.
Can I just make one statement? Because of Patsey, during that period of time, she was hourly, and because she did not make what the federal government was talking about, and coming to you all to raise her to that amount, she was not able to be exempt. But when that judicial came down and said, no, it's back to what it was originally during this stay period, then at that point in time, I was able to make her an exempt employee. She makes nowhere near 47476.
Basically, this is how we've been, that's how we've been operating.
Yes.
Just wanted to make that clarification.
No, let me, let me, I have to interject, and then, maybe this is going a little sideways, and we may just defer this for a minute. It is extremely critical for any employer to, when they look at a position, determining exempt or non-exempt, that specific guidelines are followed, and it is specifically intended that no individual, department head, hiring manager anyway, makes a determination that someone is exempt or non-exempt, because they want them to be. They have to meet specific requirements.
And exempt.
And within our, within the city, how that is set up is that individuals who like to have a question about that status, or would like to have that considered, need to go through Kim, make that request, Kim then comes to me as a third-party person to evaluate that job, to determine and make a recommendation whether the job needs to change, whether it should be exempt or non-exempt, based on my extensive knowledge and experience in this area, because my goal is to keep the city safe, because the last thing you want to do is to call a position exempt when it is not. That gets you in trouble.
Excuse me, just a minute.
If you were audited by Wage and Hour, they determined that it was not an exempt level position, you are on the hook for not only overtime for that position, but potentially them opening your books to look at all of your pay practices. It's a very dangerous ground to go down.
As an elected official, I did have the approval to make her an exempt employee. I also contacted Wage and Hour before I did it, and I did change her job description.
This is the first that I am hearing officially for a request for that position, and if I recall, this is for a deputy clerk position, that would not be one that I would, based on the knowledge I have of that role, that would qualify as an exempt status. I'd be happy to review that and take a look, but at current mileage of that job description and its role, it would not pass.
I don't need to move on from that. But I've also checked with other second-class city clerks.
With all due respect.
Who's, that's happening.
Clerk is exempt.
Okay.
With all due respect, that is not on the agenda to discuss a particular position that I'm not aware of, has been made beyond, without my review or recommendation. We have a lot more important, larger fish. Don't look at it.
I didn't mean to divulge into specific, to specific employees and anything that's ongoing currently, I just wanted to clarify that this says the city set a base salary, and we did not. I mean, we did based on federal regulation, but apart from that federal regulation, I don't think this 47476 means a whole lot.
Each of you all are going to give an email for me with the FLSA thinking of what it exempts, because of the job duties are, and obviously you all.
Can we kind of get back on task of why we're here to talk about the, I think we established what Matt was saying.
Yes.
I think if I didn't agree with what, what he said brought up the valid point, but can we get back on task?
Well, I guess we'll add my, given that, I'd say a part of my recommendation would say.
Ms. Ellis?
That exempt positions.
Answered my question.
Begin at that pay rate would be my recommendation, that you do not drop below that for exempt positions, that, that those who are placed in that pay range are truly exempt positions, and by market would fit in, into that rule, so the combination. So there, if there were, and I can't imagine what that position would be, that would not, would be exempt, that would fall below that, we would probably make that hourly and avoid that problem, because you can always make positions hourly, absolutely can do that. Okay, anyway, that, that was one of the things I was looking at, is what that exempt level of pay, or what level was when I was looking at the classifications. Looking more importantly was looking at new and existing exempt, non-exempt jobs for market value, and starting pay levels, support an upward shift. Kim had asked me to go out to the market to look at positions, because she was increasingly getting questions from staff, and directors, and rangers, and individuals saying, I don't think my pay's worth needs to be, we had specific concerns about CDL drivers and some other skilled positions, whether we're meeting the market to retain, to bring them in and retain and keep those folks. So she said, go out there, take a look at those jobs, and see where we need to be for the market. So I looked at, particularly looked at the skilled and unskilled labor jobs, because those keep moving up in value and cost of hiring those folks. Administrative support to the city clerk's point, to deputies and administrative assistants, et cetera, crew leaders, supervisors, and department directors. Been ongoing request for jobs to reevaluate for the market, and request for adjustments to individual salaries supports the need to go out and take a look at, are we doing what we need to do as well as we can. Additionally, adjusting the ranges will allow for more upward growth and help address concerns over the rising number of capped employees. Another point I wanted to look at is your longevity pay plan and how that affects people's actual pay. You currently, if people aren't familiar with that, you currently have 81 employees who are part of a now frozen plan, the longevity pay plan. It provides $200 per year, per each year of service, up to a cap of $4,000 a year for employees who are in that plan. In 2018. In 2018, 20 employees have reached the $4,000 per year cap. The additional compensation for these 20 employees equates to $80,000, or about $1.92 per hour in wages. For the 81 covered employees, the cost is about $210,000, or on average, $1.25 per hour per employee in the plan. In 2019, the cost will rise another $12,200 for the people, another year of service, and you're adding $200 for each one of those people. Employees are allowed to receive these funds in a multitude of ways over the course of 12 months, resulting in administrative headache and pay distribution and calculation of overtime. This additional pay is not reflected in employees' base pay, but it is taxable and subject to overtime calculation for non-exempt employees. This hidden pay distorts employees' actual compensation when reviewing placement in the range or internal, external market equity. It was recommended in 2012 to discontinue this plan and add the value of that pay to employees' base rate. In other words, not take it away from them, freeze it, give it to them in their base pay. The savings then would have been allocated to address other compensation needs, such as higher performance pay and internal equity adjustments. At that time, the city chose not to discontinue the plan, but close it to new entrants. Those who are currently in the plan continue to be eligible. At that time, in 2012, there were 147 people that were eligible for the plan, 121 active employees. It's estimated the city has paid an additional $80,000 since 2013 to continue to fund this plan.
So.
In addition.
Not to stop you.
Okay.
Yes, to stop you, sorry.
Okay.
Not to be rude, but, so when we made that determination not to close the plan, but to freeze it for those and not.
For new, for new entrants, right. So no new entrants since 2012.
There were 121 active employees in the plan, and now we're down to 81?
Right, so you have through attrition, lost some, your cost actually is still the same?
Uh huh.
It's, and I'll come, your cost for the plan from what it was at that time and now is the same, but it's all a matter of who's where in the plan.
Right.
And the lowest, I think, if I recall, I believe it's like $1,200 is the lowest longevity plan out there right now, that someone's receiving additional cash. In addition to the paychecks for doing their job, they're getting $1,200 to $4,000 more throughout the year, sitting next to somebody who's not getting that pay. In 2018, you had 18 employees who had reached the top of their pay grade for their job. 16 of those employees received longevity pay. So they're at the top of the grade without the longevity pay. So with longevity pay on top of it, it has their pay excessively outsized the current pay ranges for that job.
Can you explain the benefit?
I'm sorry.
Can you explain the benefit of eliminating the longevity pay plan and adding it to the base salary? I'm not sure where the calculation of savings are much.
Well, that's it is, it stops the bleeding, because what you're going to continue to do, you're not going to get away from what you've already committed. What you've said, I mean, if I'm at $1,200 a year in that longevity pay plan, I'm not recommending you take that away, because that's not going to happen. You already committed that to that employee, so that $1,200 is converted to an hourly rate, but most of these are hourly, it's a handful of exempt employees, it gets added to the hourly rate. What you're saving is, all those people who are below the $4,000 mark, every additional year, there's another $200 added to all their accounts.
That $1,200 will never increase in.
Roughly about $1,200, $200 for that year, and then, I guess, depends on who drops off and what they have to do.
I see.
It's just a ballpark.
Okay.
Back in 2012, it was about $25,000, that was the numbers of employees that were eligible at that point.
Thank you.
So it's moving in the right direction. Gone from over 100 participants to down to 81, and 25,000 additional every year to 12, too, every year.
I mean, theoretically, you could be talking about.
So it's winding down.
20 years of $4,000.
Well.
It is winding down, but not going to. Because this pay plan, if I was to just let it wind down, it won't wind down, and you're going to have, then in 15 years now, you'll have, the old single plan, all those people would be at $4,000 in additional compensation. So you still have the problem of that pay not being counted toward what their actual pay level is.
When I'm looking at someone's pay, and you say they make $15 an hour, well, they're actually, in some cases, making $18 an hour. That makes quite a bit of difference when I'm trying to determine, or Cameron and Alan say it's the same, are they adequate in paying for the job they're doing? Because we're saying that's separate, we're not counting that. It needs to be counted. It counted in overtime, it has to, again, by federal law, if I'm receiving that as pay, it has to count as an hourly employee, my overtime calculation. So from a finance standpoint, the bonuses, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, apparently those bonuses are allowed to be paid out on an hourly basis, a monthly basis, quarterly basis. There is no constraint within that plan, so finance is having to figure out how to pay these people based on how they want to be paid out that bonus over the course of the 12 months. And then, after, retroactively back and picking up overtime for any hourly employee who had overtime during that time, because it's based on their actual pay they received. So if anybody's ever done payroll, that's just a nightmare.
Liz, is it your intent for us to have discussion on this, or to, now?
No.
Because I have thoughts on it.
I'm presenting, I'm, right now, I'm just presenting a concept.
Okay.
I don't, that's why I said, take the pressure off. There's no decision being made, I'm just introducing ideas, introducing some suggestions and directions. There you go. This is just civilian, too. If you're. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, this is civilian. The longevity, this, the longevity pay plan is civilian. Fire staff is under a separate contract, so we're not talking about fire and police. Thank you. Okay. So, to begin to address the concerns that we've seen in the pay structure, our starting pay rates where they need to be competitive to bring in the skilled folks that we need, do we have higher ranges that are competitive in the marketplace that allow adequate growth for your employees? Can we address capping employees and not having as many, capping out as quickly? And can we take a little look also at some positions that are not placed in the appropriate pay grade, or pay range, I should say? So, I have reworked your pay grade system, some minor adjustments, but with this, the revised system would provide the following. Market competitive starting wage rates. One of the things I'm going to recommend is that we look at allowing the hiring managers and HR to have a discussion about starting ranges between the minimum and 35% of the range. That would allow them a little more flexibility in recognizing people with more years of experience coming into a job and being able to pay them that rate without having to the council for approval. Because, and the reality is, when you have to take that decision to another level, and if it takes more than 24 hours to get a decision back, you're going to lose candidates for these positions, especially in a competitive market. So what I'm suggesting is a compromise that still allows you to control what's being offered to people coming in on an entry-level basis and with that first third of the hiring range. Let me tell you, from a market standpoint, typically it's 50%, and that's what this was in 2012, when I recommended that hiring managers had the authority to go up to 50%. It was then kicked back to 25. What I'm asking is, I think, to make it a more workable document, to kick that out to 35% flexibility for hiring managers and HR to determine starting wages. The wider pay range for each pay grade eliminates all but one capped employee. Remember, there are 18 coming into the system with the current structure? The structure I'm proposing, there'd be one employee capped, that individual, was demoted from a crew manager, crew leader, to a general laborer with no change in pay, and is also a long-term employee. No comp system can accommodate that. You're going to have a one-off. There are 14 pay ranges. What I did with the, the two that, you remember, we had the entry-level A and B, kind of these odd hawk unbanded part jobs. I merged those together to one pay range, because there really aren't that many positions in there, it's primarily your monitors. I didn't see a reason to distinguish between the two, so that pay range is just a blend of those two pay ranges. Then we start on pay range two, and two then, two on through pay grade seven would be all non-exempt positions, pay grades eight through 14 would be exempt. And each pay grade, I thought might be helpful, too, is that, to have the council see and anyone who's looking at the pay grade, an understanding of how long it takes to move through your pay ranges. Again, it's not typical, in a more perfect world, pay ranges can be less wide, but you have a challenge of having long-term incumbents in positions and a desire to continue to pay an increase to those individuals. So what I've done is try to, again, meet the best of both worlds. Allow for a little more competitive starting wage rates and a wider range for the hiring manager to look at that, going from minimum to 35%, but also stretch out the top end. So what I provided on there, on your, on the ranges, and we'll hand those out before the meeting's over, is what you will see is, it'll take, if someone starts at the minimum, it would take them 15 years to get to the top of the range with a 3% increase each year, and take them eight years to get to the midpoint, and take them, I think, six years to get to that 35% if they stopped and started at the minimum. Because I know there's a concern about, oh, we're going to move, bring people in, and they're going to be at the top of the range right away. This gives them plenty of opportunity, if they stay in a job for a period of time, to continue to move through it. And all the pay, pay grades were set up with that criteria. There's an estimated impact to bring affect, some effective employees into what would be the new mid, minimum for their pay range. Again, some of these individuals, it's because it's a new position, I'll point that out, the street maintenance refuse workers, I believe, is that on the agenda?
Currently or generally?
Yes, they're currently in a general labor classification. The recommendation is, is that is a different job, they moved up with a higher level pay grade associated with it, so those, where you'll see higher numbers associated with those individuals affected. And again, it's, the detail is there for you to look at, and what this is showing is those that I've recommended, because they've changed pay grades or pay ranges have increased, there would be an additional money's needed to bring them up to the minimum. Let me make, also reiterate that within your comp policy, nowhere does it say, okay, we've identified this individual or individuals need to be moved up, that you have to do that tomorrow. What it says in your comp plan is, we agree that we've identified this needs to happen, now we need to plan how we're going to make that happen, should you approve the pay ranges. Particular attention, I looked at your IT departments also. Based on market, they are quite out of range of where they need to be. So I've made some fairly substantial recommendations to bring them in to where those positions would be, if you hope to ever replace those individuals coming in to the city. Okay.
Do you want to look at director planning zone?
Yes, yes. Every position, all the directors were looked at. What I've indicated there are positions that when they moved, or moved into adjusted pay ranges, they were no longer, weren't at the minimum. This is for the director level positions, I think, I don't know which one it might be, the street maintenance one is the only one that once, the adjustment was made, would need an adjustment to bring them up to the minimum. I was able to move people into more competitive pay ranges without affecting their pay, they fit nicely into the new range. So, I don't know, if anyone knows, particularly.
The pay grade and the director planning zone?
They'll come out on the proposed one here, and the numbers, I want you to have a look at it, John, because the numbers are not one for one with what we currently have. So if I give you, tell you pay range, one of our, 11, on the machine, that doesn't reflect that, which is one for, that was before.
So just to clarify, so the ones that are listed here are ones that are based on market value, they are lower than the minimum of what you would recommend?
Based on where I'm recommending putting them into the new pay grade, yes, they would be below the minimum.
For your adjusted pay grade based on market.
Or the adjusted pay range, exactly. According to your policy, you need to bring them up to at least the minimum.
Okay.
So for the director of planning, there was no need to change that particular individual's pay, though, yes, he and a number of others moved into a pay range that was wider, higher starting, but he was already within that pay range.
So you'll be recommending that pay grade, that he, that that position be moved up a pay grade?
Well, yes, into a different pay grade. Everyone actually is in, going to gain a different number, I guess, if you want to look at it that way, because the numbering system's changed. To get simply in a pay range that's wider. Now, what we're not addressing, and I'm not addressing this page, is that would be a whole other discussion, is whether people are going to be appropriately placed within the pay range. We're not even touching that. We're just trying to get a competitive pay range, to get them into the right pay range.
So this.
Discussion whether they should be further up in the pay range, is a discussion for another day.
So this schedule here lists all the positions that are not in the new pay range that you're going to present?
Right.
And it bumps them to the minimum?
They would be adjusted by those dollar amounts, they would fall below.
So the adjusted rate that you have listed is the rate that would put them at the minimum of their new pay grade?
They would put them at the minimum to entry. And again, some of those are higher dollar amounts.
Yeah.
I think the street maintenance one, what I think we need to understand about labor positions, especially in those, you're looking, 15 bucks an hour is being the starting rate just about anywhere for even some part labor positions. I'm trying to get the city moving in that direction without as much paying. So the part ones moved up a bit, but not as much. The street refuse moved up a bit, and some of the other skilled laborers moved up a bit, trying to get closer to what it actually costs going out in the market to get these individuals. We didn't make the huge move, but we made a big step in that direction. And I'm trying to do it without going the complete paces of my own wack.
Liz, when, when you look at the market rate, are you looking strictly at the wage, not, not the benefits, or you?
Right, I'm just looking, this is just, just looking at base compensation, I'm not looking at bonus plans, I'm not looking at better plans.
Got you.
But in the back of my mind, I'm thinking about that, too, when I'm trying to push people in, because the city does have very good benefit plans. And so, it's, that's where it's somewhat dangerous, when we just talk about, hey, burn boy, you need to look at the whole comp. When you're hiring someone, recruiting someone, you want it to be competitive, what does that mean? Well, you have to, come ahead and, you know, said I'm going to come into an interview and look at that job. Does it have to be at the top of the market? No. Bottom of the market is more challenging, you better have a really great job and great advantage and great benefits to overcome that. So what we're trying to do is get close to what are this elusive market is to make it, so you can hire and fall by force, you need to do these positions.
And keep in mind that this is the minimum.
No, it is, I didn't take it in on the benefit.
For her suggested pay grade, too, so, I mean, we're not looking at what the middle of that pay grade would be, or, we're looking at the minimum of your suggestion.
Right, we're looking at just getting it to the minimum.
You're talking about the minimum of a new pay grade and range structure? Is that correct?
Well, yes, I want to hand that out.
You have a copy of that?
I have to admit, I didn't hand it out ahead of time, because I knew what would happen. So I will say, that was my cause, and I'm going to hand it out then, so you can take it with you, and review that, and look at each individual job, look at the ranges, and see that. I didn't pull this thing out of a hat. Quite a bit of time that I went into looking at various compensation studies, looking at what you've done currently internally, trying to keep that internal structure good, but yet, trying to meet the needs of, admitted higher starting wages, as well as, had enough growth at the end, that, again, people will be to that pay range.
So when you give us the new one, is it going to be side by side with the current one, or we just need to go and look at one?
No, it's just, it's just going to be this one, because, yeah, it's too complicated.
You'll have to dig out the old file and review.
She renumbered them all and stuff, too.
There's a lot, yeah, I renumbered it all.
Because there's A and B.
For the whole part, they flow together.
It's taking care of us.
There's a split, one dance again, one through seven will be your hourly jobs, eight through 14 are the salary or non-exempt jobs, and if you look at it, those of your math people will see the pay grades seven and eight are essentially the same, the dollar amounts, one's hourly and one's.
Exempt and.
Right, one's hourly and one's salary, because those were jobs that were merged together. So I think it's important for the city to distinguish between exempt and non-exempt in the pay grades, just as a clean way to look at your employees, see, oh, there's this problem, we should.
Okay.
Okay. Let's see. Okay, again, another benefit, hopefully, of the new pay grade system. If you were to take the recommendation to discontinue the longevity pay plan and put that into the people's base pay, you would only have four individuals who would cap. Right now, you have eighteen, the capping just without longevity and without, with the old plan, this would have four. These individuals are the one I mentioned earlier, the crew leader demoted to a general laborer, been here a long time, individual twenty years, one with twenty-six years, and one with thirty-three years' work experience in the same job. Again, there are comp systems that really can accommodate those exceptions, they are outside a normal comp plan if you want to have any control. There would be four, so we're going to come back to them.
Are you saying that, are you saying he was demoted, he's getting a lower hourly rate, but because of longevity, he's making the amount?
No, no, no.
His rate did not change.
No. They said that what I'm saying is, my city, I don't think the cap and twenty needs to reach the top of that pay grade. And the current policy says if you reach the top of that pay range, there's no more additional increases to your base salary until the pay range is changed to adjusted. So the top of your range is twenty-four dollars an hour, and you're twenty-four dollars an hour, there's no more increase to you.
Not in your base salary, you can't make longe-
I'm your base salary.
You can't make longevity if you are it part of the longevity plan.
Longevity is a totally separate plan that's been operating out over here. What I'm saying is, I really need to add it back in, because the guy who's making twenty-four dollars an hour is actually making twenty-six dollars an hour.
Let's get back to your example. You keep saying a guy was demoted, or someone was demoted, but they're still making the same amount.
There was no adjustment in pay, which isn't necessarily, is not necessarily something you shouldn't or couldn't do, anyone's-
Liz, hold on, real quick, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch it, I'm off. He did get an increase in pay.
He did, okay, I would know.
He did get an increase in pay. But he's still over the top of that pay.
Because of, you think about-
Because of the long, longevity.
No.
No, his longevity on top of that.
He was already capped without longevity, but you're still making a salary drop down.
So it was decreased, but it's still over the cap?
Right, again, an already cut on devotion, don't necessarily cut somebody's pay, it depends on where they fall in the pay range, so maybe they go down until the pay range.
But that's the example you keep giving, is why I'm focused on.
I'm just letting you know-
That's one person.
That that is such an exception. What I'm trying to say is, what I'm proposing solves an awful lot of your problems, but there are exceptions, and these exceptions are way out. Excepting, is this individual who is in a pay range now that is two, three pay ranges below where they were. So his pay rate was already up high, and the other three individuals are long-term employees, have been getting three percent increases for thirty-three years, and their pay is outside the pay range.
Basically, what she's suggesting-
The pay range, future pay grade would have to be-
Hold on a second.
So what she's suggesting would pretty much fix everyone with the exception of one or two extremes that we really can't do much about. For example, the one that received a demotion, who's still above the pay cap, no matter what we do, basically. So it's, it's just something that we, we just kind of have to know that they exist, but the rest of those employees would be fixed under this plan.
Right. Thank you. It's, I know it's a lot, that's why I wasn't looking for a decision, and I want people to have a chance to kind of ask the questions, begin to digest it.
I'm just not sure it's a problem, that's what I'm getting at.
It's not a problem, but people, there's been a concern about who's capped and how many people are capped. I'm letting you know, there will be people capped if you add that longevity in, because you're adding four thousand dollars to some people's pay. Surprisingly, a lot of those four thousand dollar people are not going to be capped. That just moves them further up the range, probably where they need to be. So it's generally a good thing.
That's where it starts getting fuzzy. So when you say capped, so when you have a pay grade, and you move up to the top of the pay grade, as far as you can go, that's capped?
That's capped.
All right. So what you're saying is, he makes less than top of the pay grade?
No, he makes, he's at the top of the pay.
He's still at more, but not by as much as he was.
He was already there before, he was one of the eighteen.
So he was already there?
He's one of the eighteen today, that is.
But he makes less money, but I'm trying to figure out-
Not significantly less to get him out of that.
So he makes less money, so he's not entirely capped, but because of longevity, he still meets that cap, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying, right, Liz, back up. Today, and I don't want this individual to make, I'm going to make up a different-
Doesn't matter.
Makes fifteen, fifty an hour, if I go on that, five back twenty bucks an hour, twenty-two, because that's why it's capped. Makes twenty-two bucks an hour today, he is already capped today as we speak, under the current pay grade system.
Okay.
What I tried to do is, you had eighteen people out there who are capped, what can you with the pay ranges that might help that concern?
What's the concern?
So, with the new pay grade ranges, what I'm trying to keep is-
What's the concern that you've identified there? That they're capped, they can't move higher?
Because what we fear, or what Ken fears consistently, is a discomfort with not being able to provide individuals additional pay and raises. I will still advocate that you can have employees, and that is in my recommendation. What I am looking at is saying, these new pay ranges, which I believe are market competitive, again, I wanted to look at having, I want you to start focusing not on most folks over here are capped, I want you focusing on this end, on the higher range.
So there are-
They're paying enough to bring people in, and we'll take care of those who've been here a long time, as much as you can within the dollars you have. The focus needs to be reverted back.
So there are eighteen employees that are not eligible for raises, basically.
Right, but I'm trying to go why there's a concern, unless it's that we can't give them raises, and how longevity plays into that, and how longevity-
Longevity, then, if I add in the eighteen people and add in the longevity, more people would be capped if we changed nothing. What I'm saying, with the changes and the pay, pay grades, even with longevity added in, only more people would be capped.
You're saying that with longevity, then they're capped? That's what you just said?
No. People would, three, let me put it this way, three additional people. I know that one person could cap with the new plan, if I add in longevity for the eighty-one people, three more people would cap.
So they're not capped, they can make more in their pay range?
Currently, they can, because longevity is not included in it.
It's totally separate.
Right, that's what I'm trying to point out. You're saying that they're capped, but they're really not capped. They're, they still have movement in their pay range.
Well, with my recommendation, they wouldn't be, because what I'm saying is, off the longevity plan, put their pay, they're actually making their pay, and then they would be capped.
I see.
Because you're already, I think, you're already outside the pay range, and then you're going to give a longevity on top of that, you're effectively even further outside. This is making it transparent, this is what the person's actually making.
But we would be reducing how much, we would be reducing their pay potential by doing that.
Yes.
In your opinion, if we, if we add the longevity into the base salary, or into their, their salary as you're suggesting, do you feel that those wages would be inflated, or do you think that they're-
No, actually, it helps you a lot, because a lot of them are long-term employees, and it puts them more appropriately in the pay range. You've got a lot of compression going on with people below your midpoint, that really should be at your midpoint and further on. And that's why I say, I don't even want to get into that discussion, because that gets quite complicated, saying, where should they be in the pay range, given their experience, given their experience? I'm just trying to get them into the right pay range at this time. So that longevity actually helps a lot of folks when they look at, and say, yeah, they've been here fifteen, twenty years, they should be at the top of the pay range, or approaching the top of the pay range, and not at the midpoint. Good question. If the city wishes to recognize years of service, or the city, HR could be directed to develop a recognition plan to address this need and not tie it to compensation. And again, when done right, the programs offer a variety of appropriate levels of personal recognition and demonstrate the city's appreciation for tenure without undue strain on limited financial resources. So what I'm suggesting, if the longevity plan was intended to recognize years of service, there are less costly ways to do that, and if that's something that the city's interested in doing, direct HR to look at developing a plan that recognizes seniority for the city. It's recommended, coming back to the capping issue, that the city continue capping employees' pay rates once they reach the top of my now new proposed pay ranges, I'm still recommending you cap. The new pay ranges are generous and allow for considerable growth. The purpose of the pay caps is to control compensation costs and redirect dollars to employees who are below the pay grade or not placed appropriately in the pay range. The city's focus should be on those employees who are below the midpoint of a pay range as a goal, and a comp plan is to move experienced employees to the midpoint. Along with the discontinued longevity pay plan, the city could offer alternative reward programs for employees that have reached the top. There's been some requests for that. There's a number of things you can do, again, it can get quite extensive. A popular thing that people, that companies have offered is perhaps offering a personal day to employees, a competent level performance, been here for your personal day, take within twelve months, and has no cash value, there's really no cost for the city taking a day off from their place. I'm just throwing these out as suggestions. We're still pushing, while I really, you know, want to give, give them something for being here. Again, I'm not agreeing with that, but I think there are things that that's what the city feels they'd like to view. If you decide to go that route, I would set a nominal amount, like, throughout, like a hundred and fifty dollars of competent level performance, or a hundred and fifty dollars. Whatever you do, put it in writing, and be very clear about what an employee needs to do in order to receive this compensation outside of the pay grade system. Again, I know there's a lot today, and you're going to do verification, and take in what can be kind of complicated comp information. What I'd like to do next is I'll hand out these pay grades, let you take them with you, so you can review those. Again, there's fourteen pay ranges, the only one for one is nine, actually, one for one, but you'll see that for most part, people moved along with their group. There are some exceptions, because from a market standpoint, I needed to spread some people out and pull them into a higher range. No one went lower, or there's nobody that said, you're being overpaid and we need to go down. It will not happen. So I'll hand those out, and then you can review what, my notes are here, we do that, and then we're able to come back next month, they'll have a chance to digest this, and then we can have questions and discussions about whether this will work for the city, or you want to build a new structure.
So, we're building five hundred and twenty houses on the eastern of town, and I believe the lowest house price would be one eighty. Can you give us some kind of analysis on whether or not our, which one of our workers can afford that type of a house?
Is that a question you want me to answer? Are you saying?
Just ask them.
I don't, I, I don't know if I can answer that. I mean, how much money does someone need, what would a house payment be, how much money does someone need to make to afford a hundred and eighty thousand dollar house? I don't think, I would be making a, I guess, is that, I mean, I'm not sure there's a, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I'm not sure what your question is. Are you saying-
Can somebody make a fourteen dollars an hour afford a house, making a-
Probably not. I mean, I could see that.
So I'd like to know what that point is.
I don't think I'm qualified to answer that, because, tell me what the house payment is on a hundred and eighty thousand dollar house.
You're asking me?
Yep. I don't know what that is.
I mean, you have to go with what the average rate is for a mortgage and do the analysis, analysis.
I don't know what that rate for mortgages. I mean, I'm not sure why, if you're asking, at what point could someone buy that house, somebody at forty thousand dollars here could buy that house. Their spouse may have income, I mean, I'm not sure as an individual, you're looking, that they buy a house, it might be two people with two incomes.
Right.
How much income do you need to support that? What are your debts? There's all sorts of questions that I don't have answer to.
You're not qualified to come up with that analysis.
I'm not going to touch that. I think, and I don't think that's something that the city would directly to look at, whether someone could afford that house.
Well, I've just asked you to do it, I'm part of the city.
I think this is-
If that's something council would like me to look at, I could certainly take a look at, I'm not sure how that moves this-
It'd probably be about eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred dollars per month, assuming a good interest rate at thirty years. But, I mean, from there, there's a lot of factors.
Seven, eighteen dollars an hour.
No, or your insurance.
A hundred, a hundred ninety thousand dollar house will cost you around fourteen.
Twenty-nine thousand dollars a year. Are you going to pass out the new pay rates? Yeah, stop passing those out.
I think that's important when we're paying our workers in terms of whether or not we're paying, whether or not we're paying somebody that's able to afford a housing system.
But you also don't have to manage their money, I mean, there's a, there's a whole lot of variables that, what if, what if they're a poor manager's of their money? I mean, that's, yeah, I'm calling it out.
Well, that's a different story, but if there's-
It's part of it for, I mean, you can't just come up with something like that, but-
Well, I believe when they gave the presentation for the, for the plan commission, they, they came up with about-
You're trying to figure what the minimum income someone would need?
Sixty thousand dollars per household.
They would need sixty thousand, fourteen dollars an hour is going to be about just under thirty thousand dollars a year, that I can change, so I'd say no, so you probably will hear that here.
Well, I knew the answer.
Why didn't I put it on paint paper? So it'd be easier.
I'm not sure what the resistance is.
We got tweeted, you're wild. You're nothing else. I'll come back after that. Proposed. Again, I now say you take the time to review the notes I have there, the pay grades, and then review those, if you've got specific questions for Kim, or myself, in the meantime, direct them to Kim. If you want to attend to this, I'm going to watch you come back and talk to them.
I'll just make sure.
Discussion about whether you want to report, but then, if you want any part of the recommendations. So appreciate your time and attention. Thank you. Thank you, Liz. Okay, this is our time.
I don't-
We're supposed to-
Current, current.
I'll write down now. Current, current.
He's going to have every one of those folks fired up. And rightfully so.
So, Kim, just, so on here, it has the range that they're allowed to, that they're approved to.
Which part are you, which one are you talking about?
In our current plan?
Yes.
The far right column, that's what they're approved to?
Currently, yes.
And we're just going to compress it to a flat thirty-five percent is what this is.
Well, currently, if you look at our salary administration policy and the current pay grade, the city council has adopted a policy that says that the HR director and the hiring manager can't hire anyone over the twenty-five percent of the range without permission. Years ago, in a former administration, we kind of did that via email, Lisa, you can kind of attest to that, Nathan can kind of attest to that, we would do that kind of via email, then realized that that probably violated, I guess, some policies and some stuff.
Competency, yeah.
Yeah, that's an open door. So to Liz's point earlier, the, the disadvantage that I have when I'm working with a hiring manager, and we get somebody who is totally competent, oh, you know, very qualified, we lose a lot of good applicants, because we don't have the ability to pay somebody over that twenty-five percent range. And I think I've mentioned one other time, at a council meeting last year, we have people out in the River Ridge area stopping our drivers, I mean, stopping them, like flagging them down and stopping them, asking them to come work for them. So, that, that was the other initiative that I wanted Liz to go ahead, you know, since we had the time, since we didn't have to rush this in 2017 to get it before the budget, you know, Lisa and I talked on numerous occasions, you know, looking at our general labors and CDL drivers and some of those entry-level positions, to try to really take a look at that and figure out where we were compared to the external market. And the other thing, the sanitation and refuse workers, we kind of changed that, we did some job analysis with the two supervisors out there and the current department head, looking at exactly what they do. And one of the reasons we kind of upgraded that was the old job description, pretty much focused just on trash, and I know Mr. Ellis can attest to this, they're out there doing patchwork with blacktop, you know, sometimes they're doing a chipper truck, they don't have the same job every day, most everyone now is cross-trained, so on any given day, they could be picking up refuse, the next day, they could be out doing patchwork, they could be out on a chipper truck the day after. So it's really not just refuse collection anymore, it's, it's gone beyond that. So in fairness, to try to attract some of those entry-level folks, what they're really having to do, because we've had some turnover with people getting in here, and then like, that's not what you told me I was going to be doing, or that's not what I thought I was going to be doing. So, that's kind of the, the main impetus for changing that title and looking at that pay grade.
So, currently, if, if, let's say a director wants to hire someone above the 25%, like they, they can, you can, even with your permission?
Currently, we don't have the ability to do that.
Even with your permission, they can't do that ever?
No. If you look at the salary administration policy, what we'd have to do is come back to a council meeting. I would have to vet it through you all at a venue like this at a council meeting. You'd have to agree or disagree. Typically, it takes two readings. Well, by that time, I can tell you that most people that are, that they're qualified, look at me and go, I have to wait how long?
Okay.
You know, and then we're kind of a joke, or they've moved on to somewhere else because they either have other job offers or they're not willing to wait another two, three, four weeks for us to make a decision.
Okay.
You know, I, I know a young man that was looking to come to work for the city as a driver with sanitation department. And sanitation couldn't come nowhere close to what he was making on his current job.
No.
They were maybe $4 an hour difference, and you're not going to walk away from the $4 an hour job.
He was close to about six.
Yeah. So, that's one of the things.
You're given what they have to do and given the, the weather conditions in particular of what they have to do, so. And not only just, just the laborers there, but just the general labors, kind of across the board.
It would be interesting, Kim, if the people here would go to sanitation and climb on the back of one of those trucks for a day.
I would love for all of you guys to go to every department and spend a half a day.
You're talking about seeing, seeing things with a totally different eyesight.
Yeah.
I think we should be mindful, at least from our perspective, I would like for us to be mindful of what we pay and the ability for, you know, we have all this growth and we have jobs that come into town and we're building these houses and apartments that, at a minimum, we're paying our employees the best we can to be able to afford these things. I'd like to think that's our responsibility to make sure we're doing that the best we can.
Well, Dustin, when I was street commissioner, we had some employees that qualified for, their, their kids qualified for the paid lunch and everything.
Oh, we have a lot of employees that.
And they were actually on food stamps. We had employees in sanitation that qualified for food stamps.
And to your point, Dustin, I applaud you, and that's part of my job. That's why I keep coming back and I'm not going to go away. I feel like part of my job is to, to kind of, kind of what Liz had mentioned too, is to advocate on behalf of our employees, but to also do it mindful of our budget. As you can see from the number of folks that we have in the years of service, we have a large number of employees who come to us and this is a career for them. I mean, this is a lifelong job, and we want to reward them appropriately for that. I think most of them are very grateful and very, you know, thankful for their job.
And they're proud of it.
But I think the, the good thing is, I think we have the opportunity as a municipal government to be unlike a lot of other corporations these days and not treat their employees respectfully, with dignity and with good wages and good benefits. I think we have an obligation to do that. That's, that's my personal and professional opinion. I think that most of you probably concur with that. It might not be the highest paying job, and I think most people know that, with the benefits and the holidays and the good work environment and the training that we offer employees for, for advancement, as you can kind of see, I know Len left earlier, but wastewater. I mean, the number of folks that, that take opportunities here in the city to take advantage of the opportunity that we have for training and for education. And if they stay, I think that's great. I think it's a wonderful testimony to us. If they decide to move on, hopefully them moving on to make a better life for their family, to make better wages, to buy a home, to better their lives for their children and their families, hopefully those will be the people because of what we've done and what we have given them in terms of skill set and training. They'll be that candidate that gets selected somewhere else, that hopefully they stand out during an interview process like, hey, you know, those people in the city of Jeff, they got it going on because this person's done this, 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 and this, and has this certification. And that's happened in a lot of cases. And I, I thank you all for that too, because I know that a lot of the departments now have training budgets that, when I first started, were pretty much non-existent.
You know, just a heads up, I'm, I'm having a problem with us telling employees when they come, you're going to get longevity, and then stop it, freeze it where it is. I feel like the argument could be made is that was a commitment we made to them.
And that's certainly your decision to make, and I think that's something that's a tough decision you all will have to make. I think you're probably accurate. I think the people that are at the bottom, I think the lowest is the 1,200. You know, if you want to honor that commitment from 1,200 to when they reach the 20, I mean, that's certainly a decision you all have to make. That would definitely change those numbers. I think you're probably right that that would create a problem. The other problem that I have internally in being, being an HR director is the number of folks who come to me with the concern that they get longevity, they get longevity, I don't, I don't, no don't, you know. That creates a lot of issues, which is why the recommendation was to roll that into the salary. Now, if you choose as a, as a group to roll that into the salary and honor if that person stays for 20 years, that's certainly within your purview to, to make that decision. Just knowing that that changes that bottom line number that will, you know.
Another thing that we need to look at for the year 2018 is how much is it going to impact our budget? What we've already budgeted? How much more money are we going to have to go and incorporate?
Yeah, that's on this, that's on page two, the 51,000. So, on page two, it's like the fourth bullet point, Ron, right above like the grid, where it says the estimated city's financial impact to bring employees to new minimum of range is 51,509. So, that would be, that'd be the financial impact, that'd be that dollar amount.
And the only other thing I'll mention is that we, all around budget time as well, we discussed raises and how we wanted to do the 3% raise, if we wanted to do the flat raise or continue the performance review. And so, we said that we would continue that discussion into this year moving forward. So, that's another thing that we'll probably need to.
How many years? So, in 2018, we'd be 50,000, we'd need to find 50 whatever.
51,509.
The following year though, that number's going to go down.
It would just be the 3%. At that point, you just have the raises.
But what I'm saying is the first year is going to cost us, but moving forward every year, it saves us for the next 18 years.
This number's only going to continue to grow if we continue to ignore it. Is that what you're saying? Is that what you're asking?
Are you saying if we did this now, then our costs would decrease year two, year three, or four?
Because we wouldn't be paying these anymore because it's already cooked in, they would be stopped.
Yes, it's already cooked in.
So, the first year, it costs us 50,000, but every year moving forward for the next 18, however long it takes everybody to filter out of that system.
That's presuming they all stick around and stay with the city for that long.
If everyone stayed, then we would, actually, this move would be a cost savings to the city of a substantial amount of money spread out over a year.
And Liz did figure in the raise for 2018 and all of, you know, Christine and I have a whole nother sheets of analysis that have individual names and all that pertinent information, but there are percentage of the raises have already been figured in.
I don't, well, because you'd have to account for, that $50,000 increase is going to be, is going to have to be in every budget from here on out. So, it's not just like a one-time 50,000 pay because then all of a sudden we're paying that employee the new rate. So, that 50,000 will be the same every year moving forward. And our 3% pay raise will increase, but I, but it could be, that could be less than the longevity pay.
And you could have some higher, you could have some higher paid employees that leave. And note too, I think I copied yours in color as well, but on page two, the ones that are in blue, that's not going to be part of the general fund, that's going to be out of wastewater and drainage, so that actually makes that dollar amount a little less. And I didn't have her separate that out, but if you, if you look at the one, two, there's five of them, I believe, in blue, those are all wastewater. So, you can actually take those totals to the right and deduct that from the 51,000. So, that, that helps a little bit as well. It doesn't make that 51 as large of a number. Personally, I would like to have this decision made and move forward one way or the other within the next, you know, several months. I really don't want to wait until the end of this year and then roll it over into 2019, but that's your all's decision. Yeah, and the 150 amount that she, that I know that she put in here for those that might be capped, and I've talked to a couple of you, and I think 500 was a number that one person mentioned. So, again, that's, that's a decision that you lucky folks get to make. But I would really sincerely ask that the decision be made sometime soon, so this isn't one of those things that continues to linger, because when I first presented new pay grades, it was in 2016, and then again in 2017, and here it is 2018. It goes fast, and I know you've got a lot of things on your plate, but I'm here that, you know, the most important thing I have to do is to deal with all the employees. And I know that what I have to do is most important to me and not always is most important to you guys, but I think a year and a half, I'd like.
From a process perspective, when, when, do the department heads do their interviewing? Do they do the interviewing?
Mm-hmm, yes.
The, what it would seem to me, the thrust would be knowing that if, if they have the ability to put somebody in the mid, 50%, go up to 50%, it seems to me it's.
But we don't have that ability.
It's proposed, right?
No, 35%.
Okay, 35%, which is up just what, 10%? What, what is it before, 25%?
25.
Yeah, okay. It, it just seems to me that, that most of the folks, if, if I'm interviewing somebody, I want to pay them as much as I can pay, because it's in my control to pay.
And as an HR person, I would tell you that that is not the philosophy you need to take whenever you interview them. No.
That's not the philosophy you should take, but it.
And that is not the philosophy that they typically take.
As a human with a heart, a person with a heart, getting to Dustin's point, you want them to be able to.
You do, but you need to look at their skill set and you need to look at the folks that, like Liz had mentioned, who they're working side by side. Do you want to be that person that pays you coming in here because you felt sorry for them and you want to pay them the most you can, but then this person sitting next to him doing the same job, been here for five more years, is making 15 cents more than they are?
I guess I'd be curious, the ones that are, the new ones that are coming in, do you have the, the ability to tell us that, that, you know, the majority of them are being paid the minimum starting, or the majority are being paid 25% over minimum? I'm just, I'm just curious at what, what we actually are offering people when they come in, because I know the competition at River Ridge.
It's really kind of all over the place, again, depending upon their experience and do you, you want to answer that? I think Christine's probably more, because she does most of those new hires in terms of the onboarding.
Can you approve that? They have to get your approval to go 25%.
Yes, and if there's anything that we question, her and I are always kind of like to, go ahead.
Yeah, just to answer that, I would say usually they're coming in at the minimum. So, I just handed animal shelter, 1180, 1490 for most of the ones coming in. A lot of that has to do with internal equity and looking at where your current employees is to what Kim said, and that they're not going to want to hire somebody at a higher rate when you've had somebody that's been here two years. So, and I, I don't have figures or numbers, but I can say most of what I see is coming in at 1490, 1180, whatever those CDL, I think is 1790 an hour.
But when we talk about exempt employees, if, if the grant writer leaves today and redevelopment hires a new grant writer.
She's not an exempt person right now.
Okay, what's an exempt employee?
IT director.
Me.
If Logan, if Logan leaves today and Matt has to hire a new assistant IT director and Logan's salary is already in the budget above the 25% mark, you know, Matt might say, or if I'm the IT director, I might say, well, I've got it in my budget, I'll give you the 25% because that's what's in the budget and I might as well, because I can.
Part of our education is to get people to not think that way.
But, but that's.
Look at the person, look at their skill set, and where do they fall within that continuum? Is that what you're asking?
But when, but when you've got one position, not, not, maybe, it may not be the case for the animal shelter because they've got six people running the kennels, but when I have one person that's going to fit in this hole and there's not really a.
Our IT help desk person's a perfect example because the person who left is making a higher salary than the person Matt hired.
And is that because he made more above the 25% mark, or is that because Matt didn't want to pay that much?
It's because of the fact, the number of years of experience and the credentials that person had.
So, he made more than the 25% mark?
No, he did not make more than 25. The person who left was over the 25. He's been there for 56 years.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. So, he couldn't have paid him as much as that person with all those years of experience anyway.
No, no.
But he probably did pay him the 25% mark.
To your point, then, if I, if I'm following you, is that the current system with having that 25%.
We're giving what we can give based on the budget constraints, I feel like, when it comes to.
Seeing as the department head, I don't, I hired a few people and I did not hire them at 25% mark.
But it's, but it's available there to do that.
That's true.
That's not our, that's not how we operate. That's not our philosophy of, if that's what you're asking. I guess I'm not real sure what you're.
That's just a cynic. Be, be direct.
And to answer your question, it is available and they could do it. Do I see it doing, doing that on a regular basis? No.
And part of that is our initiative and our education was trying to spend time working with department heads and hiring managers on why and when you do that, so that we don't get into, Nathan, I'm going to call on you and Lisa because you've been around for a while, the cynicism, Matt, that you may have, that you all might be sitting there thinking that, well, if we give them this much money, they're going to pay them that much money. We don't do that. And I dig in to be able to prove that, no, we're not going to do that. It's kind of like trusting your kids with, here's $10, don't spend it all in one spot. You know, I'm going to trust that I'm not going to spend it all.
The performance increase. I mean, there are some departments that have not, are in front of, are not going to use 100%.
And they didn't. This year, we had people turn money back over. We had employees that got 0%. We had some that had 2% and 3%, we had some with 4% and 5%.
I think, Matt, you make a good point, and.
Trying.
What makes me feel better about it is if there is a red flag, because 25%, that's typically, when you're talking about salary positions, that can be a big number, is that if there is a big red flag, then we have a fantastic HR director who has the ability to not approve that requested salary.
And we've had some healthy debates with department heads and hiring managers of why we wouldn't, and sometimes we win and sometimes, you know, we don't, but usually we, usually people see our side, especially when you look comparison, unless they come with a huge skill set that they have got some really, really good experience, you can go back and, and, you know, one of the things we try to do is to tell that person who's the hiring manager, okay, if you're comfortable with this position, what are you going to do when, you look at the people who've been here forever, tell me what we're going to do when Lisa comes to you and wants to know why you're paying this person $3 more than you're paying them. What are you going to tell them? You tell me how you're going to handle that. And sometimes if you walk through those scenarios to make it real, then they're kind of like, hmm, because I'm not going to give them that justification. That's going to be on them to try to explain to somebody why they're paying a brand new hire more than somebody who's been here for 10 or 12 years. And then sometimes that'll get into performance issues, like, well, then you need to substantiate and document that performance issue.
This could be naive of me, but I see it as more of a negotiation tool. So, when you propose a salary per position or whatever it might be, and then that potential hire says, well, I want this.
Yes.
Then this gives the hiring manager or the, the department head or whatever, the ability to be able to counter.
I did that with Christine when I offered her the position.
Yeah, I mean, I can personally attest to that. I came in and I had a job offer the same day as the city at $17,000 more than what she was offering me at the time.
That's a charpy.
We're a lot of fun here.
And I'm here anyhow because she actually went back and she went to council and.
And got that addition.
And got me the addition.
What justification? Written justification?
Let me throw in, not the $17,000. Let me clarify that.
But in your position.
That's our agenda tonight, is that a little?
Thank God the bridges were being worked on. Let's just put it that way.
But in your case, that, that process worked?
It did work, however, it took a while, and if I wasn't currently employed at that time and happy with my job and only looking for certain reasons to look elsewhere, I with my job and only looking for certain reasons to look elsewhere, I wasn't really actively seeking a new position. I just started kind of doing that, and I had, so I had the leisure of...
Being able to wait.
Of being able to wait. If I didn't have that leisure and I was actively looking and wanted to at the time, I don't know if I would have waited.
How long? I think one of the questions I would wonder, how long, if we, I don't have any problem having, giving the administration or the department heads the ability to offer 35%, but if I offer somebody 35% of pay grade eight to an exempt employee, and they have a max earning potential today of $74,000, according to your proposal, how long is it going to take me to get from 35% to my max? Because if I am, let's go down this hypothetical road. If I am hired in by a new mayor to be the finance director at 35% of the finance director's pay period, and I'm here for eight years, how far along in the pay period am I going to get if that pay period doesn't change?
This kind of takes about six years if you're starting at the 35%.
Six years?
It's over there to the right, too, like on a little...
Do you see, it's actually listed there, like years to max from minimum is 15.
Orange and purple, years.
It's 15 and it's six, right?
From minimum, it's 15.
Yes.
To the midpoint is 8.3 from the minimum.
Right.
And the years to the 35% from the minimum is six. From 35% to the max, I mean, is that eight years? If my mayor does three terms, do I get to argue that I'm capped out and need to make more money?
No, it'd be more than eight, because just years to the mid is eight.
The progression into the pay period, to the top of the pay period, will get progressively shorter. The length of time will take, be shorter because I make more money.
Correct.
So 3% of that inflating salary every year will get me to the, to the max more quickly because I started off at a higher rate.
Correct.
So what is the time that it will take to, for me to get to that max?
I think if you're starting at, if you're starting at 35%, if you're starting at 35%, then I believe it is, oh, wait, no, I'm thinking of it wrong.
I could do the algebra, but it's going to take me a minute. I'm just...
It'll take me longer than a minute, so...
Actually, she is. Technically, he is. I don't know. But am I making sense?
You are, but, you know, the point is also, I'm sorry, to interject, is that hopefully we're reviewing this in a six-year period, and that grade and that max is going to do like what we're proposing.
And that's, that's kind of the next point, is some of these are...
It shouldn't be a stagnant document.
Some of these are $20,000 shifts. It's a pretty, some of the ranges are moving pretty substantially.
Well, we haven't done anything with it for over four years, so five years.
It has been a while.
Take a look at the economy, and there's been a shift. And you, you look at some of those, they're also some of your, your more skilled professionals.
That's what you get when you have a less than 4% unemployment rate in the state of Indiana.
Here we did in the city.
Just throwing that out there.
Over the past 12 months.
Okay. Stealing my paper stuff.
It seems that, that this will take, still have some conversation to...
Absolutely.
To go over her proposal and...
Lots of digest.
And...
It'll take a year. I just asked it not to take another year.
I mean, do we do another workshop? If we, if we don't, then we do it in a main meeting, and it's going to be a very long meeting.
Yeah, I think what, before Liz had left, she said for us to, she presented it, kind of digested, if we have any questions, funnel them through Kim or go to Kim, and then I think, she suggested another workshop.
I think she just figured that, and then sort of thought that this is not something you just want to like make some quick decision, think about it, you might have other questions later.
What, what's the, I mean, what's the...
Don't want Matt to think we're pulling something over on anybody.
What's the, what's the, how's the process going to work here? I mean, we have this proposal.
It's been so long, I don't remember. Oh, sorry.
Same here, same here. We have this proposal that Liz has made, and I don't know if, how anybody else feels about it, but I have a lot of things that I'd want to iron through before we move to approve something. What...
The good thing is she is not available most of February. She's going to be out of the state for about three and a half weeks. I think she returns, if I looked at the calendar for February, there's a holiday and a Monday, which would make a council meeting on a Tuesday, is that correct? She doesn't get back until like that Monday, so I think she was a little reluctant to try to walk in here on a Tuesday after just getting back from vacation.
Are there going to be any meetings? Like, can we have a meeting with not...
I was just surprised that she left, because we're, the discussion is ongoing, and the consultant that we hired to do this isn't here.
Oh, I turned around a little bit.
I think she just felt that she was just doing the presentation of information without the question.
Okay. So when will that happen?
Whenever you tell us.
Not in the month of February.
After May, you may have a different outlook.
I can double check with her, but that's...